Thank you for -- wow, I'm really loud. Thank you for attending the May 6, 2024, meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. This evening's agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. Printed agendas are available for our guests at the back of the room, or you may find the agenda on your mobile device by connecting to the district's website at www.wcsoh.org. Click on the "Our District" link, select "Board of Education", and follow the "Board Docs" link to our current meeting agenda. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 6.01. The first set of comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.01 through 11.01. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.01. There is a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screen. And before we do roll call, I just want to say it's awesome to see you all here tonight. Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now is the fun part of the night. We get to recognize our retirees and Jets Pizza. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Nestor Baker and Ms. Altman.
Good evening. So every year, the Ohio School Boards Association, or OSBA, gives local school districts the opportunity to recognize businesses that support their district. Businesses, large and small, play a key role in supporting the community and local schools. And I have to say, we're so grateful to have so many business partners in our districts. So thank you to all of them. And this year, we have nominated Jets Pizza to the OSBA 2024 Business Honor Roll. We'd like to recognize Jets Pizza and their efforts to support our Hope Squad program, and that's in all three high schools. For the 2023-2024 school year, Jets has provided at no cost pizza for all the Hope Squad meetings. To date, this is a total of 27 meetings with approximately 90 students at each meeting, and we know how much pizza high schoolers can eat. So we truly appreciate Jets Pizza and their contributions to Westerville City Schools. And I'd like to invite Zach Houston up, who is here to accept the award for Jets Pizza. Thank you so much, Jets Pizza. And now we'll move on to the 2024 retirement recognition. And the first thing we have to do is say congratulations to everyone. So this is going to be a lot of applause tonight, and let's just start with some now. We are thrilled, in fact, I'd say we're delighted, that we can recognize our retirees in person and share with you how important your contributions are to the district. Although it definitely makes us sad because we are losing such great, such phenomenal employees, we rejoice in knowing that this does start a new chapter in your lives. Collectively, the Westerville City School District is losing over 1,100 years of in-district combined experience from its licensed and classified staff. Wow. Regardless of where this phase of your life's journey takes you, please know how proud we are of the work you have accomplished during your time here. Your legacy will be treasured for many years to come as the students whose lives you touched and guided move on to become successful adults. In addition, you've touched the lives of your peers. Seeing the results of your work firsthand provides us with an optimistic outlook on the state of our schools, the state of our community, and indeed, the state of our country because you've touched the life of a child and have taught our future leaders well. We wish you a long, healthy, happy retirement, and know yours will be big shoes to fill. Now, this year's retirees will be honored much like a graduation. Each retiree in attendance will be called up to the podium, and we ask that you stand facing the audience while we share three words that your coworkers say best describe you. You will then proceed down the receiving line. And with that, let's begin. First this evening is Rhonda Hoffman, whose building is the Academic Enrichment Center. And the words used to describe Rhonda: thoughtful, dependable, and hilarious. Tony Miller, from the Academic Enrichment Center. Tony is dedicated, intelligent --
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. And authentic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Kesar, Buildings and Grounds. Susan? You are caring, helpful, and thoughtful. Thank you. Next is Kyle King, currently at Central High School. Inclusive, and advocate, and ambitious. Also from Central High School, Kimberly Mahaville. Kim is kind, she is caring, and she is helpful. Thank you, Kim. David Ray, from Central High School. David, they say that you are classy, you are dedicated, and you are dependable. Thank you. Michael Hewler. Mike's at the Early Learning Center, and he is caring, and passionate, and authentic. Thank you, Mike. Oh my goodness, there are just so many friends here. It's just wonderful to see so many people who have done so much. And the next is Karen Gabay. Karen is currently at the Enrollment Center. She is invaluable, admirable, and knowledgeable. Thank you, Karen. Kathleen Kosinski, from Genoa Middle School. Caring, nonstop, and dedicated. Anita Lau, from Genoa. Anita is compassionate, and energetic, and fun-loving. Deanna McDaniel, from Genoa. Deanna is passionate, she is resourceful, and she is collaborative. Elizabeth Beth Dalen. Mrs. Dalen is currently at Handby, and Beth is kind, she is devoted, and she's stimulating. Kim Desmooy, Kimberly Desmooy. Nope. Well, if you see Kim, tell her congratulations and how much we appreciate her. Marty Wicks. Marty's currently at Heritage. He is energetic, passionate, and caring. Catherine Leslie Gowan, Kathy Gowan, Huber Ridge. Kathy is knowledgeable, consistent, and passionate, indeed. Lauren Mariota, from North. Lauren is adaptable, spirited, and an all-in warrior. Yeah. Timothy Hill. Doesn't look like he's here this evening, so if you see Timothy, he's at Point View right now, tell him he's witty and funny and helpful. Valerie Thompson. Valerie, thoughtful, kind, hardworking. Thank you. Connie Craigmile, from the preschool. Connie is an advocate, she's knowledgeable, and she is passionate. Philip Sharvat, from Transportation. Pathetic, organized, and sharp. Well done. Janice Horn, from Transportation. Janice is passionate, she's a coach, and she's altruistic. And the last retiree that we're honoring this evening is Carol Camnick, from Wilder. Carol is exemplary, artistic, and collaborative. Thank you. Bravo to all, and let's have another huge round of applause for our retirees. And Charla Boss is waiting to take all of your pictures right out there. Follow her to the lobby area. Yeah. Yep. Good crew, a lot of good people there.
Okay. All right, well, thank you to those that stayed. Next up, we have reports, and we don't have any, so we'll move on to approving the board minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on Monday, April 22, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And we have no public comments at the moment, so moving to 7.01. May I have a motion to approve the purchases in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 5705.41D1 and Board Policy 6320?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Oh, Ms. Marshall, could you talk to us about this?
Yes, thank you, President Meyer, members of the board. So these are what we call the in-and-out purchase orders. So this is where we have a purchase order that was open as a date after an invoice date. So we have four before you this evening, and these were late adds to the additions to the agenda, so I apologize for the late add to the agenda, but we wanted to make sure we are able to get these paid. So one is for place services from the Operations Department, and this is for South's Phase 6 work. So we did have a line item that was closed in error on a purchase order, so I'm afraid you are probably going to see several of these in the coming months and meetings. It was a large line item, it did get closed. There's been work, it was open prior, but because it got closed in error, it was too late to reopen it before we closed the month out, before it was discovered. And then for Ohio Technical Services, also from the Operations Department, this is Whittier's abatement work. So the PO, what is dated March 5, and the scope, the way they invoice is actually shown March 1 through the 31st, but work didn't actually take place until later in March. So we don't really think this is a in-and-out, but we weren't able to get an updated invoice from the vendor, so that's why you see it before you. And then we have two for Cedar Point for the Class of 2024 Trips from South and Central High Schools. And this is simply when they, when they call in for a price for the, based on the number of tickets, they use that date for the quote as the invoice date. So we have a couple of instances of that here. And I do just want to mention, North also had it in and out, but it didn't exceed the $3,000 threshold for the board agenda. We did go ahead and pay these on the Fifth Third Bank credit card, so, because we were up against the deadline for the kids to be able to go. So I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Any questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Ms. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And can we take the personal consent agenda as one? Great. May I have a motion to approve the personal consent agenda 8.01 through 8.12?
Still moved.
Second.
And Mr. Cooper, welcome.
All right, good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, members of the board, Ms. Marshall, and Interim Superintendent Hamburg. This evening's personnel consent agenda includes action items with regard to resignations, retirements, one-time pays, contract status changes, and other employment-related decisions. We have five staff members who are on this evening's agenda for their retirement. Karen Gabay, who we just saw just a few minutes ago, is retiring at the end of the school year at 26 years of service to our district. Janet Rhodes, after 24 years of service at Westerville. Thomas Love, under disability retirement, after 10 years of service to the district. Vicky Hutchinson, with 17 years of service to the district. And Deborah Wilson Stoner, with 26 years of service to Westerville. We appreciate all they have done for our students and certainly wish them the best in their years of retirement. Additionally, this evening, under Item 8.08, we are seeking your annual approval for contract renewals. These are for classified staff members who have a contract expiring at the end of this school year. At this time, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
I just have a quick question. So I am looking at 8.05, so trauma training for our SROs. I was just wondering, will that, will they be training with staff members, or will that be alone, and who will be doing the training for them?
That is a very good question. I'm sure I have that answer for you, but --
Oh, sorry.
Sure.
Great.
Thank you, Tina.
Yeah, I just, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Very much.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. Moving on to old business. And may I have a motion to approve the final reading for guest speakers, the Policy 2430.01?
So moved.
Do them all at a time?
Oh.
Work together. Okay, let's do them all together. May I have a motion to approve Old Business 9.01 through 9.08?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? Perfect. All right, then moving into new business.
We need a vote.
Oh, yes, we do.
Right.
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. All right. New business. So we have the first reading of Field and Other District Sponsors' Trips, and welcome, Ms. Baldwin.
Good evening, President Meyer, members of the board, Superintendent Hamburg, and Mrs. Marshall. As we continue to see an increase in the number of field trip requests post-COVID and support our staff in developing trip proposals, our district team has worked to develop updated and streamlined policy and guidelines to ensure trips are aligned with our district's educational framework as well as ensure safe and equitable access for students. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments? All right.
Thank you.
And next up, we have the first reading of Policy 5310, Health Services. Welcome, Ms. Santa.
Thank you. Good evening, President Meyer, members of the board, Superintendent Hamburg, and Mrs. Marshall. You will see our Health Services Policy 5310 up for an additional revision this year. It is aligning with Ohio law requiring buildings that enroll girls in Grade 6 through 12 to provide free menstrual products. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. We really appreciate this. This is great. I know it's required, but this is fantastic, so kids don't have to walk down the hallway and find it. Thank you.
Yep. Actually, I do have, I do have one. I really appreciate this. I think it's incredibly important. Just a question of whether this was, whether there's any state funding for this program or not.
Yes, and I can, Carrie Dennis may need to chime in, but initially, this is state-funded in year one, so that started the installation of all of the dispensers in our secondary buildings in the first year of products. And then after that, we will take on the cost to sustain.
Okay, thank you. I'm curious about how much, yeah, about how much does that cost then a year afterwards?
And I'm not, yeah, we're keeping a close eye on it because we're not using as much as maybe we initially thought. We also stock clinics, right? So there's a couple other different pieces that we'll track, and the law only requires secondary buildings. You know, we stock our elementaries as well, and trying to just, I think, capture the right amount of information to determine what that actual cost will be moving forward.
Yeah, so at this point, it's only been in place for about six months, so I think we need a little bit more time to understand what this really looks like. We'd be able to probably report back about a year from now and let you know what it looks like.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have standing business, 11.01. May I have a motion to approve the out-of-state overnight field trips?
So moved.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Baldwin.
Good evening. So this is actually an updated date. We mistakenly had 2025 as this trip's date, the last board meeting, and this is a correction based on the correct date that they're planning the trip. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Yep.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And next, we have public comments, and we do have one person, Mr. Russ Harrison, if I'm reading it correctly. And just a reminder, you will have five minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screens, and Mr. Dorn will call five minutes when it's elapsed. I know we talked about this last time. Please keep your comments professional, avoid the use of inappropriate language, and refrain from identifying individuals in the event of the complaint. Please address your comments to the board and not to the audience. I really look forward to hearing from you. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, President Meyer and the school board. What I would like to discuss tonight is Senate Bill 168 and some of its bullets points. To be a lead professional educator, a senior professional educator, a school advisor, or assistant superintendent as a graduate, you need a master's degree, but they want to change that to a bachelor's degree only. They want to change how teachers and principals are evaluated. They want to hire an individual who holds a master's degree in a field with no teaching license. They want to remove the requirements for cutting off staff, which is non-teaching, not by seniority, but by whatever means the district or the bill seems necessary. In Part 328 of this bill, Section C, it has student verification code. The student verification code can be used for any student going to any school in the state of Ohio. This isn't just for public schools to make it better, this is for private schools. This is to open the door for private schools. In my opinion, this is nothing more than attacking the public schools to remove operation funding, maintenance funding, and building funding. This is all infrastructure for that future process. How do they do this? By public money. They take public money to require public schools to teach certain aspects of certain programs, but yet the private schools are accounted for nothing. They want to take, through this bill, and what it is, is an expanded unfunded mandate. That's all we're talking about, that's what this is. It's a chance to move money from the public school system to the private school system, where private schools can choose their students, they can do what they want, and then they can stand and say, well, look at our test scores. Well, you don't have true test scores because you don't have true teachers. None of this has been made to help the public school system. This has all been made to open up private schools at a rapid pace. And if any parent out there listening thinks this isn't a big deal because of teachers, well, teachers today, it's you tomorrow. If I was to describe this bill in closing in two words, I would use segregation, age discrimination. I'd also ask where are the students, constitutional civil rights? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have board comments. Who would like to go first? Or does anybody want?
Just congratulations again to our retirees. If you ever want to sub, we'll take you back, for sure, whether it's driving your bus, or teaching, whatever, come on back. Your comments, Russ, were spot-on, thank you very much.
I will second that. Thank you for speaking, really important for everyone to keep their eyes on. And I will also just wish all of the, especially high schoolers, good luck. I know a lot of kids are putting in a lot of late nights and studying for tests right now, and teachers are dealing with a lot, so just everybody hang in there. We're almost there, so best of luck to you all.
Russ, thank you for your comments. They were spot-on, indeed. I appreciate the conversation you and I had after another meeting. And I hope you will tell everybody you see. And I hope you will tell everybody you see about what this means. And I think it's important, at least for me, I'm not anti-private school in any way, shape, or form. However, I am opposed to the deliberate blurring of the lines and the utilization of public funds for private entities. However, it has been portrayed by some in the community that we are anti-private school. We're not. We are pro-public school and pro-taxpayer dollars being used for the common good. It is often perceived that educational dollars are for individuals. No. Education dollars are for all of us. It is a common good, it is a public good. Just as a, an analogy that's often used, a police department is for the common good. We don't choose which police officer we wish to come, or if we wish a police officer to come when there are issues requiring law enforcement, because it's for the common good. Education is a common good, it is a public good, and as such, it needs to be supported as a public good. Thank you, Russ.
Nancy, I want to echo your comments. Thank you, that was well said, because public education, education is not a commodity, and it shouldn't be treated as such. It is a common good. So thank you for bringing our attention to that. SB 168, we'll be watching it. Also, congratulations to all of the retirees. Most of whom are no longer here, but congratulations to them anyway. Yeah, that's it.
I just want to echo my colleagues, a big, huge congratulations to the retirees. Thank you to the JUDs, and yes, hang in there, we're almost at the end. Best of luck to all the kids taking, our students taking tests, and to the teachers that are trying to get everything wrapped up, and all the staff. I really appreciate that you came back and you did give this presentation, thank you. I know that we continually talk about how taking public tax dollars and sending it to private schools really is impacting the public school system. And we are pro-public schools, so thank you, I really appreciate it. And with that, the board will meet in regular session on Monday, May 20th, 2024, at 6:00 PM at the Early Learning Center, which is here, 936 East Wind Drive, Westerville, Ohio. And may I have a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing the employment and compensation of public employees?
So moved? Second?
Sorry, I missed that. Okay?
Yep.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Sorry. Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
So we are going to go meet. Feel free to stay if you want, or to go home. All right. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved? Second.
Ms. Marshall, could you take the vote? Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.